Hafade, welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation Procurement is now called to order. It is now 2:10 PM on Wednesday, November 6, 2019. Notice of today's public hearing was first given on October 29 for the five-day notice and then November 4 for the 48-hour notice, meeting open government law. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today. Senator Telo Titigui to my right. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino to my left and to my far-left, Senator Joe Sinagastin. Thanks for joining me here today. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear testimony in regards to two bills. Bill 168-35COR, sponsored by myself, Sabina Flores Perez, co-sponsored by Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, as well as Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. It's an act to add a new Article III to Chapter 45, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to mandating regular testing and mitigation of radon in schools and licensed childcare facilities, and initiate a needs assessment of government at Guam buildings. The second item on the agenda is Bill Number 204-35COR, sponsored by Senator Joe Sinagastin. It's an act to add a new Article IX to Chapter 77, Division II, Title 12 Guam Code Annotated. It's relative to authorizing the issuance of tax credits for contributors to the renovation, improvement, and participation of the Guam Basketball Confederation to the FIBA Asia So we now begin our agenda. The first item is Bill Number 168-35COR. Again, sponsored by myself, co-sponsored by Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, as well as Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. It's an act to add a new Article III to Chapter 45, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to mandating regular testing and mitigation of radon in schools and childcare facilities, and initiate a needs assessment of Gov Guam Buildings. So I'd like to start with giving an introduction to this bill. So Bill 168-35 prioritizes the health of our infants and children, who are one of the most vulnerable segments of our population to environmental toxins, by requiring radon testing and mitigation in schools and childcare facilities. The bill also aims to protect government of Guam workers and members of the public who use government facilities, by initiating a needs assessment for radon testing of all Gov Guam Buildings. The measure is authored by myself, co-sponsored by Speaker Tina Munya Barnes and Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. I'd like to thank my colleagues for their support. So radon is a colorless and odorless radioactive gas, a known carcinogen. U.S. EPA recognizes it as a second-leading cause of lung cancer in the United States. According to the American Cancer Society/Cancer Action Network, testimony approximately 15,000 to 22,000 lung cancer deaths per year are associated with elevated radon exposure, and more than 10% of which are non-smokers. In addition to lung cancer, long-term exposure to radon increases the risk of thyroid cancer, which can affect blood pressure, body temperature, metabolism, and weight. U.S. EPA ranks indoor radon among the most serious environmental health problems facing us today. On Guam, historically dangerous levels have been measured, including in our schools. U.S. EPA sets the maximum recommended action level for pyrochurives per liter of air. Anything above that is considered dangerous. Yet some local buildings have recorded levels as high as 143 pyrochurives per liter of air. The indoor radon gas is associated with the geological formations of karst limestone, which is the predominant substrate in northern Guam, where nearly 2/3 of the population of our island live. Buildings constructed in these areas are susceptible to increased concentrations of radon, which may enter undetected through structural pores and cracks that develop over time. In order to protect our children, Bill 168-35 requires that all public-private schools and licensed childcare facilities conduct radon tests within two years of the passage of this bill, and every five years thereafter. Guam EPA shall collaborate with GDOE to seek federal grants to assist in testing and mitigation of radon. Guam EPA shall also provide free radon testing services to properly license childcare facilities. If radon is found above dangerous levels, then it must be mitigated by a method approved by Guam EPA. Furthermore, prior to receiving permits from the Department of Public Works, they must pass muster. Their building plans must include radon-resistant construction techniques approved by Guam EPA. In thinking about our loved ones and those in our community who have been diagnosed with cancer, as leaders in this society, we must seek ways to provide support and to minimize cancer risks to our people. Bill 168-35 is an important measure that aims to reduce exposure to a known carcinogen and prevent cancers and other health effects related to radon exposure, especially those who are most vulnerable. In recognition of November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month and September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, it is particularly appropriate time for this body to take action on Bill 168-35 without delay. I thank my colleagues for their support on this measure. It is imperative we work together to protect our citizens, especially children, from the cancer and health risks of continuous exposure to high levels of radon, which exist on our So I'd like to call upon those that have signed up to give testimony on this bill. We have Bill Hagan, Kathy Rivera Castro, and Roland Gutierrez. If you can please take a seat in the table, and just we'll start in the order of sign-up. So when you speak in the mic, please press the button until you see the red light come on, and then please state your name prior to giving testimony. So the first one listed is Mr. Hagan.
Good afternoon, Senators. In regards to Bill 168-35, committee members, senators, your recent report, and you suggested that there are 21,000 deaths per year in the United States caused by radon exposure. I doubt that the people of Guam are exempt from those numbers. The U.S. military in Guam has retrofitted all their housing units with radon mitigation systems, and all new housing and enclosed workspaces are being built with radon mitigation systems. Do they know something that we don't know? We can't see it, we can't taste it, we can't smell it, but its cumulative effect over time can be deadly, and we should make every effort to protect our children from whatever hazard found in our environment. Testing of excessive radon is simple and non-destructive, disruptive, and the results after confirmation should be made public when dealing with public buildings and spaces. Some thoughts. Line 1, Page 2 should have "testing before mitigation." The U.S. military should be consulted about their testing results and where they have found high zones of high levels of radiation, radon. Once zones of high radon concentration are established, homeowners in the areas should be encouraged to test their homes for excessive radon. There are private contractors on Guam capable of doing testing, but the results will last three days and should be considered. Please feel free to consider us as a resource as you move forward with this important legislation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hagan. Next one is Ms. Rivera Castro.
Buenas, hafade, Senator Sabina Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation Procurement, and your fellow senators, Senator Telo, Senator Kelly Marsh, and Senator Joe. My name is Kathy Rivera Castro, and I'm a resident of the village of Wong Mong. I'm appearing before you in full support of Bill 168-35COR. I am the current Vice Chair and the incoming Chairperson for the Guam Cancer Coalition. I'm a mother and a grandmother that wants to do what I can to ensure that the island my grandchildren, along with all the children of our island and the generations after them, will be one that is safe, healthy, and prosperous. Yesterday, our mega-haga Lulian Guerrero and Segunda Magalahe Joshua Tenoro had proclaimed November 2019 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. In my remarks on behalf of the Guam Cancer Coalition, I stated that lung cancer is the most common cancer worldwide, as well as on our island. The CDC reports that about 80% to 90% of lung cancers are connected to cigarette smokers. However, it can also be caused by secondhand smoke, a family history of the disease, and exposure to certain air pollutants such as asbestos, arsenic, radon, even diesel exhaust fumes, and other environmental and workplace carcinogens. The survival rate is much lower than any other leading cancer sites, such as colon, breast, and prostate cancers combined. According to the World Health Organization, radon has been identified as the second-leading cause of lung cancer. May I add that lung cancer is the number-one cause of morbidity here on Guam, and cancer is the second-leading cause of morbidity. Radon is a dangerous invisible gas that has been found in numerous homes in our island. This tasteless, odorless substance can easily get into one's home through cracks and openings in the property's foundation. Radon escapes easily from the ground into the air, where it decays, produces further radioactive particles. As we breathe these particles, they are deposited on the cell linings of the airways, where they can damage DNA and potentially cause lung cancer. It can also be found in the drinking water, and we can deduce that radon exposure can be dangerous to one's health. Radon has been a silent killer for the past 30 years, and during this time, half a million Americans have died from radon-induced lung cancer. The mortality statistics according to radon exposure are staggering. At least 50% of the people exposed to radon will die within one year. The number decreases to 15% chance of living for five years. And to prevent radon-related illnesses, it must be important to undergo an inspection for radon testing. As harmful as radon exposure is for adults, the risks are even greater when it comes to children. Children's bodies are still forming. The airborne particles released by radon can cause permanent damage to their DNA tissues in their lungs. The exposure causes cell damages, which can eventually lead to cancer. I applaud Senator Sabina Perez for introducing this bill along with her co-sponsors, Speaker Tina Munya Barnes and Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. Your commitment to the health and safety of our community is evident by your support. It is my greatest prayer that when this bill is entertained on the session floor, that your colleagues will join you with unwavering support and commitment to see this bill pass. Please continue to show the people of Guam that you have put their interests first before all else, thus fulfilling what they have asked of you. Each time a measure such as this bill is introduced, we come one step closer to lowering the incidence of diseases on our island. These types of policies will allow our people to live in an environment that is not only healthy but safe. We are prolonging and extending lives. Thank you once again for giving me an opportunity to come before you and having my voice heard, on which transpires on my island, and join you in fighting the good fight for the betterment of Guam. May I take this opportunity to say from my family to yours, wishing each of you and your colleagues, along with your staff and families, a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Sign him, Ase, and bend his hand.
Thank you so much for your words, Ms. Castro. And yes, I'm committed to reducing the toxin burden on our island and protecting our people. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the list is Mr. Gutierrez from Guam EPA.
I want to defer to our PIO for our testimony for our agency, and I'll be here to answer any technical-related questions or anything in regards to our testimony.
Hi, hafade. Administrator Walter S. Leongoro extends his regrets for not being able to appear before you this afternoon, so he's sent us in his place. So Guam EPA agrees with the legislative findings and intent of Bill 168. The agency is pleased with the efforts of Senator Perez and the entire committee that led to identifying a sense of urgency to support our mission in radon awareness. Guam EPA has spent a great deal of time and resources to attain both an accredited radon lab and certification for staff to train others in radon measurement and mitigation. The accreditation and certifications are both nationally recognized by the National Radon Proficiency Program. This is a program that provides certification credentials for professional radon testers and mitigators. As an independent administrative program of the American Association of Radon Scientists and Technologists, Inc., the NRPP is governed by a certification council consisting of radon industry stakeholders who are responsible for credentialing policies and procedures. In addition to that, NRPP is the recommended certification body of the U.S. EPA. While the agency recognizes the importance in safeguarding our youth from potentially harmful effects of radon exposure, we'd like for our local statutes to standardize the nationally-recognized programs, and we recommend mirroring or adopting the standards of the NRPP into local law. This gives the agency authority necessary to carry out its duties and actions associated with radon, such as creating rules and regulations for radon testing requirements, mitigation, maintenance of mitigation devices, design standards, certification requirements, and general requirements for quality control and quality assurance, work planning, and data integrity with respect to radon reporting. In addition to that, we want to be able to identify enforcement and compliance measures to define our regulatory role as it relates to radon. We also want to be able to seek proper funding for adequate staff to fulfill this mandate. We also want to look into integration into future building codes for future development in radon-resistant construction, and perhaps the discussion about multi-agency coordination with other stakeholder agencies like DOE, Department of Public Health, and DPW. Addressing these five concerns is critical towards the success of this bill's mandates. Bill 168 is a great start towards achieving our common goal in addressing radon. This bill's progressive and forward-thinking has the potential to enable the agency to effectively guide the island's management of radon in homes, businesses, private and public buildings, and with a greater degree of certainty. We ask that more time be given to consider our concerns and to allow this bill to mature to its full potential. Our air program is encouraged by your efforts, and we will be more readily available for discussion. Signed, Walter Leongoro.
Okay, thank you so much, Nick. So in looking at your testimony and the bill itself, so can it be implemented? What do you think is a proper timeframe for implementation? And are the rules and regs necessary to actually do the testing and mitigation?
Well, in order for... So radon testing is a complex procedure, and there are basically quality assurance and quality controls that need to be implemented so that the data that we receive from analyzing of the radon detection devices are accurate. And so analyzing down to four pyrochurives per liter of air is... You have to be very accurate. And so when you pass a bill that says that there must be testing, there must be some type of a standard that must be across the board, so that the results that we get from this testing can be relied on. So we're... We agree with the bill in its form, but we think there must be more to it, so that we can assure that what we're getting out of the bill and what the type of results that we're getting from these people that are testing are accurate.
So in your testimony, you have an accredited radon laboratory, so can that be utilized to do all the...
We can utilize it, but there's only a certain amount of testing we can do. I only have two staff that's certified to do the testing for, if you're going to say, the whole island, all childcare centers, schools, and public buildings. That staff is not dedicated to doing radon. I also do enforcement of major and minor sources of air emissions, asbestos, lead abatement, and other things. So I mean, to do all of that in two years would be a monumental task for my staff. Additionally, if you were going to have contractors and other people that are going to contribute to that, there must be some standards in place that they need to abide by, that we can ensure that the accuracy of the results for their testing. Additionally, the people that are doing the mitigation, if there's found out to be that there are high levels of radon in there, they must be certified also into some type of standard. And that standard, you know, so that they would come about to do... When they do their mitigation, it actually... The results come out for what they're intended to be.
Okay, so Mr. Hagan, you've mentioned in your testimony that the military is already currently doing the testing every five years, in fact.
I'm not sure what their testing frequency is. I know Wolf Creek, which is a subcontractor to the Navy, has regular testing, which they do like every year. I know their homes are being tested regularly.
Would you happen to know if they qualify for the NRPP certification?
I believe that they send their capsules back to a lab in the United States, which I'm sure has to be certified.
Okay.
I'm also certified under the NRPP. As he suggested, there should be a national standard or a standard approved within the legislation, so that it's consistent.
Okay. And you have that certification currently?
Yes.
Okay. As far as testing and mitigation is concerned?
Testing, mitigation, and the Eperm lab, it's certified.
And so, Mr. Gutierrez, your lab is also...
NRPP certified, yeah. So currently, there are only four people on island that are certified. Mr. Hagan, Mr. Packbear, and two of my staff, actually five people. And so there... When you run a radon lab, you have to have your lab certified by a certified agency, either the National Radon Safety Board or the National Radon Proficiency Program. And to do that, there are certain standards. You must do performance testing, spike testing, and you must do continuing education for your staff every two years to turn it in. All of the people that I know currently are doing military contracts are all off-island contractors that are brought in at a substantial price to do the testing. Generally, when there's testing that's available, especially in the States, tests generally run about $25 a test. Mitigation is another whole animal itself.
Okay, so according to the fiscal note, there's roughly about 103 entities. We're talking about public schools, private schools, DOD schools, and licensed care facilities. How long does a test take? And do you think it could be done in two years' time?
I'm not sure. A test takes minimum of 48 hours to actually run the test, and it takes three hours to stabilize the canisters, and another about 20 minutes to test each can.
So potentially, the capacity is there? I mean, if they just dedicated the workload to... For a two-year period, I mean...
I wouldn't be able to do that with my staff. We have other... Like, the new power plan is coming out, we're permitting that. We have other mission sources that we permit. We also do vehicle inspections for smog, and I couldn't dedicate three of my staff for two years to do that.
And considering, I mean, maybe we can figure out the time, as well as maybe the FTEs, how many employees are required to do that?
That would be up for discussion, yes. We could discuss that.
Yeah, we can provide that information, that would be helpful.
I would need the information in regards to what needs to be tested, and the amount of rooms, buildings, and what level you want to be tested, you want to test it to what standard.
Okay. So yeah, we'll definitely communicate on that. But it is possible. I mean, just the capacity needs to be boosted.
So you would expect Guam EPA to test all 103 schools and every room and building and public building?
Well, capacity regards to...
Just childcare and schools? Or are you talking government buildings also?
This is 103 entities, so...
So basically, the standard is if anything is above four pyrochurives, you retest. And so we use a charcoal canister laboratory, Mr. Hagan uses the Eperm. Eperm, once you stabilize the Eperm capsule, you basically can test it almost instantly. So it takes me 20 minutes to test, and three hours for each of the cans to stabilize. Not only do we have to deploy the cans, we need to go pick them up, bring them back to our lab, stabilize them, so I don't know if we'll be able to do that with my staff. We can discuss it.
We'll discuss more about the resources.
The second part of that is, once it's over, four, you need to retest. And after you retest, if it's over, then mitigation has to be done. And so who will be doing the mitigation and ensuring that the mitigation is done properly?
Okay, so let's talk about the resource issue on another time. Are there any other barriers to accomplishing the testing?
Well, who's going to enforce the requirement for testing every five years? Who's going to enforce the requirement to make sure they retest every two years if they have a mitigation system in place? I mean, that's standards that need to be... That needs to be put down, so that we know who's going to enforce that. I mean, is it going to be part of a permitting process for DPHSS, when you walk in there to get your permit every year, that you were tested within the last five years or two years, if you were mitigated? I mean, there's some things that we need to discuss to make sure that the radon testing and mitigation are kept up, once it's in place and once it's done.
I think that's, you know, that's something that could be worked, considering the long-term health effects, and considering these are a vulnerable population. Yeah, so we'll definitely look at the resource issue. Did you have a comment?
Yes, sorry, Senator. So we also noticed that the Enabling Act is being amended, but we would also maybe suggest that an entirely new chapter be implemented into 10GCA that would deal specifically with radon, to give us the proper authority to enforce and to do all of the... I mean, you know, issue all of the certification requirements and talk about the reporting requirements in detail, and give us the ability to form the rules and regs to carry out the statute. And I think that would go a long way towards not just reaching out for the schools and the daycare facilities and the government facilities, but the entire island. So, you know, we want to be able to revisit that with you at some point, and I think that would be the best means to give the bill its greatest potential. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Titigui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, everybody, for being here today. You mentioned earlier, Roland, that you have two staff currently that are certified under testing for radon. What does it take to become certified? Do they go off-island to get the certification?
Well, we're certified now to give the classes for certification, and then we're set up with Guam Community College for testing. So we can give the class for the measurement class. It's a 24-hour class. It's basically, you come to class 24 hours, and after that, you have two years to take the test. The mitigation class is a 40... It's almost a 48-hour in-class and then one day of fieldwork. And so we can also offer that class, and then you can take the test also at GCC. So basically, we were given a grant by U.S. EPA to basically stand up our analytical lab, certify our staff, and then certify our staff to teach these classes on island, so that contractors and other measurement providers or mitigation providers didn't have to go off-island. And that's all part of the capacity building that we're trying to do at our agency. We just gave our first class at the last PIEC, and we basically had three... Two people from off-island and three people on-island, which is one person, including my staff. So we had two people on-island that actually... Other than my staff, that actually took the class. So we're trying to build capacity, so that we... There'd be an industry to actually accomplish this, that Guam EPA wouldn't have to actually do all the testing itself. We wouldn't mind doing the public buildings and the, I mean, you know, government buildings and government schools and things like that. But when it comes to private homes and other businesses like that, I think we should build capacity within the island, so that private contractors and they can do that type of work.
So that's the purpose of your agency in addressing radon, is to, well, certify other individuals to do the testing themselves? Is that the only purpose that you do? Or what testing have you done out there? Have you done any testing at any other agencies, like government building or a school?
Yeah, recently, we've tested Guam Visitors Bureau. We've also tested the Department of Revenue and Taxation. We've tested some of the schools that some of the mitigation systems have gone down. But actually, we're actually building up that. We just had our lab certified just the beginning of last year, and we're... Basically, we had to get the staff certified, and we did that this summer. And we're currently working on our second class that we're going to be giving out probably within the next six to nine months, which is the mitigation class. And so we can basically certify people on island to do the actual radon mitigation.
So that being said, that you are doing some testing out there already for some agencies and buildings?
Yes, we are.
Buildings and schools. Anything in the private sector?
We haven't done any... Only private homes and residences.
Private homes?
Yes. So we haven't opened the program. We're going to open the... We're, we're going to open the program out to the public very soon, and you can come into our office and get radon canisters and kits to test your home.
I see. Okay, I noticed that also in the fiscal note, it says that BBMR was not able to receive a comment from Guam EPA on the estimated cost impact requirements for Bill 186, I mean, 168. And the good chairman mentioned some of these schools, a subtotal of about 103 individual. Have you had an opportunity to review what BBMR wrote?
No, we, we had some difficulty in assessing any type of number. I mean, given, this is, this is a new universe for us, in, in terms of adding to our regulatory role. So we weren't comfortable giving any, any...
Numbers?
Reliable feedback. I mean, because at, at the time of the request, there, there were still some unknowns in terms of what the lab's capabilities were, what our abilities were for recruitment into Mr. Gutierrez's program, and...
I appreciate what BBMR did, because they took the initiative, and they went out and did some numbers, just to give us a cost estimate. So I'm, I'm asking the chair if she can direct you guys to at least work with BBMR and these numbers, and see if you can, you know, agree with these numbers as well. At least take a look at it, and provide some insight. I'd like to hear what you have to say about this BBMR report they sent to us, as far as cost. Because right now, they're looking at about $52,750 on just the, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, total estimate of about 6, 7, 8, 9, 129 buildings and facilities, at about that amount of money, and that seems awfully low. So I'd like you to look at that and see, because we need the, we need the numbers. Also, you, you mentioned how you're putting down rules and regulations, that you want additional time to review this. And I, I agree about the chapter that you brought up, to put it in the Chapter 10, Guam Code Annotate having its own legislation to do that. Talking about rules and regs, have you had the opportunity to look at other jurisdictions on how they do it, with regards to radon, and, and their rules and regs that you're looking at trying to establish, too? Do you have anything like that, that you've looked at?
I have not seen any personally mandated in the States. I believe it's more of an industry mandated, I'm sorry, it's an industry-driven goal, where the, where the realtors and other associations get together, and they've done that. I, I will look into it, if, if there's any actual regulations from the government in regards to test, the requirements for testing. There's none that I currently know of, but I will look into it further.
Yeah, I think that might be very helpful, because, you know, it's, the sooner the better on this, you know, to get something like this going, I think it's very important. And I, I really like your suggestions, especially incorporating the other agencies and departments in this, you know, DPW, Public Health, DOE, all to be a part of this. And, yeah, looking forward to looking at BBMR's recommendations, or their estimates. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you so much, Senator Taitegui. Senator Kelly Marsh Taiteno.
Senator Massey, Madam Chair. And Sujus Massey, to everyone who came here to testify, each of your testimony offered something important, some insight as to how it affects our community potentially, how it affects children more so, because of their, their growing and, and so forth. And it was important to hear about some of the recommendations, of course, and ways to strengthen this, so that it continues to meet those needs for our communities. So I definitely thank you for that. So a few questions came to mind as we were going through this material. In your recommendations of what needs to be put in place in order to make this bill fully functioning for the community, and meeting all of the goals that we really want to see, and better protecting our safety, you had mentioned having more staff. Do you have an estimate at this time as to how many additional staff would be helpful for you to have in place, for this to be a fully functioning program?
No, currently, I have not seen the BBMR report or request, and I have not seen the number of buildings or schools, childcares, or rooms that have to be tested. If I had that information prior, I may have been able to give you some idea of what it would cost the government itself to do all of that testing, in regards to the current staff I have, and the, their pay scales, and the amount of time it would take me to test these buildings. Not currently. We can come up with it, if I have the numbers.
Yep. And, and I think this continued communication between yourself and the author, and myself as co-sponsor, that we can also be continuing to refine this, and maybe figure out the most time-efficient, most effective way to get this out there and meeting community needs. So that may be changing as time goes on, anyway. I'd also like to know, perhaps, it's information that Mr. Hagan has, what is the typical cost of testing? So I'm, I'm guessing that it's, it's going to be predicated, to a certain degree, on the, the size of the facility and so forth. But can you give us an understanding of what kind of cost we're talking about, if it's a private endeavor, if we hire a private company?
The cost is basically in the labor, in the entry into the facility, placing the testing device, setting it up, coming back 48 hours later, closing it and removing it. So it could be three, four hours of labor, plus the testing, which takes about 20 minutes. So it's not so much in the technology, as it is in just manpower that are required to place and remove these devices. And we don't pay minimum wage.
Right. So that's, that's very good in outlining the, the manpower that would be involved, or human power, as I might say.
So a test could run you $150 in your home.
Okay, for a home. And then for something larger, and I realize that our schools are of various sizes, but for a school, it, I guess we would times the size of our home to, until we get to a school, so 500, $1,000, if it's a large school.
If we're doing a number of tests in a single area, I mean, the, the time required isn't much more than a single location. So if you want to do a school, you would probably not do every building or every location, but randomly, at the ground floor level, get the feedback, and determine whether or not you have to complete every, every building, every, every classroom. So, yeah, 500, $1,000, you could do pretty good testing.
Okay. And that helps me understand the process a little bit better, and it also helps me understand some of the costs that are involved in, in potentially one way or the other. So one of the things that I, I was thinking about, or ran through my mind, so you were mentioning that at some point, we're going to be able to pick up canisters and test our own homes. Did I understand you correctly when you said?
Yes, we have the capability right now. If you can come, well, we haven't opened it to the public, but you can come to our office and request the canister, and conduct the test. There are outlined detailed testing procedures that you need to follow to ensure that you do the test properly. Our results are basically only accurate if you follow the instructions that are given to you to do the test.
Okay. And so I'm, I'm glad that I understood you correctly. So in this, this may be something that we continue to communicate, but would it seem to, to be feasible, then, to set up a system like that, since it is something that people can, with guidance, handle, for these childcare centers and these schools, to be maybe even trained as a group, and walk through the processes, and then they could self-test?
Well, there is a quality assurance and quality control problem with that. If you give an individual a test, and he takes the can, never opens it, brings it back, and I analyze it, it's going to be non-detect. So generally, there is the third party that's involved to ensure an independent analysis, that the results that we're receiving are accurate, and they were done properly. If you just give a canister to a childcare center, and of course, they want to be zero, just don't open the canister. Now, bring it back to me in two days, and I'll analyze it, and it'll be nothing. So there must be some type of third-party independent person that goes in there, whether it's some type of tech, because the techs don't need to be actually certified to do it, we can train them to do it. And the testing that was done in the early 90s, from Dr. Burkhart, they basically had the school staff do the test, but, you know, they're not testing like, you know, for a business or anything, they're testing for the school. So that would be a little bit of a problem. If it was a home, there would be no problem, because you would want to know the results. But if I was going to be subjected to actually putting in a mitigation system, I wouldn't open the can. So that'd be a problem. That's the only thing that, with that.
Okay. And it's, it's, it's helpful to hear the issues that you outline. And so I'm wondering, right, of course, we're trying to think about this as efficiently and effectively as possible, and so certainly, we want to safeguard the children, that's what this is all about, and the, the rest of the community, but that there may be some means of having a third party, or someone who is certified, or is the technician, that can be that quality assurance. So, I mean, we don't have to decide today, but I'm just kind of exploring some possibilities And when you tested GBB and, and other places, what have been your results thus far? Were there any findings that are above the levels that are indicated in the bill?
Not at GBB, and not at Department of Revenue and Taxation.
So thus far, you have not run across any buildings that have exceeded?
No, government buildings. Yes, no, we've done tests, we've done about probably 100, since last summer, we've done about 100 homes, and yes, we've had high results, as high as in the hundreds. But none of the government, the two government buildings that we tested so far.
Okay, well, I think quite a few of us can breathe a sigh of relief there, that, that's good news, that the government buildings are safe for the employees and the, the rest of the community that go in them. For those 100 homes, for those that tested high, what was your, your next part of the process? Did you refer them, yeah, did you direct them to proper mitigation?
We recommend they do mitigation, but whether they do it or not, that's up to them. Some of, some of them decided that they're going to ventilate their homes, and they've tested, a few of them have ventilated their homes and retested it, and as long as they've ventilated it, they're fine. Some of them just, just didn't do, I don't know what they did, they didn't do anything.
Well, yes, they got the information, which was important and useful, I'm sure, and then we hope that everybody is mitigating to the best of their ability. So thank you for that information, and I look forward to continuing to work with you as, as this bill moves forward.
Sujus Massey, Senator Kelly Marsh Taiteno, Senator Joseph Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to first thank Kathy, and thank you for your testimony. And I like what you said, these types of positive law are people to live in an environment that is not only healthy, but safe. I like that statement. And I like the information that Mr. Hagan provided, that the military is doing it. There must be something going on on the base that they should share with us, right? Especially, I live up in Jigoo, so if they're doing it up in Anderson and Navy, and for the southern folks, we would like to know what's going on. But my concern is that, number one, I'm, I'm in support of your bill, Madam Chair. What I'd like to know is, actually, maybe the question should be more at Mr. Leon Guerrero, not at you two folks. And the reason why I ask this is that because his statement is, "I agree with the legislative findings and the intent of the bill." Then on the third paragraph, "We'd like for our local statutes to standardize the national recognized program, and recommend mirroring or adopting the standards." I don't know if either one of you can answer it. Is there, has there been any submission by EPA to ask that we, we change the statute? Or is it just because of this bill, that there's concerns that we need to mirror it? Are you aware of that?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand the question.
The statement from Mr. Leon Guerrero is, "We'd like for our local statutes to standardize the national recognized programs, and we recommend mirroring or adopting the standards into local law." My question is, has anything been submitted by EPA to ask this body to make sure the statutes in compliance with national standards?
No.
Probably not, right?
USCP has not, but they are the ones who provided the grant funding for our agency to stand up our lab and to be NRPP certified.
I, I understand that. I heard what you mentioned. All I'm just asking is, has Guam EPA asked that statute to be standardized? And that's what I'm trying to lead to, because it's hard to support the bill, but also say we can't stand it up. Okay? Either you support it, and you're going to provide information, because the budget's going to come up where we would ask you, what is your funding, your funding requirement for staff? What do you need, and what funding you need? Because I don't remember, I don't know if the chair can, can remind me if there was anything provided by EPA saying that they needed funds to stand up and to increase your staffing, because, you know, I heard you quite clearly, you've got short personnel. You've got a vendor that's willing to do it, it's a business transaction. But at the same token, we're talking about schools, government buildings. It's $150,000, $150 a building, per se, a home, could range to maybe $1,000 per government building, and it can be absorbed by Guam EPA, and through federal grants, such as, like it's mentioned on the bill here, that DEWE will work with federal grants to find out, to assist in the testing and mitigation. And just what I'm trying to get, sir, is that, as I read this letter, and I'm in support of the bill, and I'm trying to just work it where, I think we're missing, the bill's is very simple. Start the testing and get it done in two years. Give us the data, so that this body can actually find ways to fund you, so that you can fulfill it. That's really what, what, what I'm going to be asking you as the appropriation persons, that, Madam Chair, your bill says, let's get the testing, we start the budget process in January, February? If you don't provide us the information, then the bill is, is, is good, the letter becomes having a fault. You know what I mean? We support the intent, and we want to make sure that everybody's working together, because it's talking about our children, it's talking about keeping our environments safe. And exactly what you said, when you test homes, sometimes, you know, homeowners have a habit of not taking the mitigation process, and maybe they need to be informed that they got to take the mitigation, because if they attempt to sell it, the real estate industry needs to know this, that this home radon rating is too high, don't sell it unless there's a mitigation, so that, you know, like some people say, you know, somebody got suckered into buying a home for $150,000, but they got radon shooting up the sky, Mr. Hagan comes in, because you won't get involved, and it cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars to clean the house out. There's a mechanism in place that everybody needs to know what's going on, other than just the schools and government buildings. But when we start talking about individual homes, we're talking about the people in general. I mean, you might end up, unfortunately, hopefully not, or myself, you might end up buying a home, thinking it's a great-looking home, but we didn't realize, or didn't know, that the radon level, level is so high, that they never took your advice, that maybe, maybe later on, Madam Chair, a bill can be introduced, that when we talk about homes, there'd be some fines and penalties for selling a home that's dangerous to people. Sir, Mr. Lee.
Hi, thank you, Senator. So I, I do seem to recall Bill 169 being signed into law, right? So that, that discusses how selling brokers for real residential property have to disclose that information to the, to the buyer, if there was any testing done, and if there was any, you know, what, at what levels the testing revealed, and if there was any mitigation measures for, for the home. So I do know that the clock's ticking on us, because I think we're supposed to be able to provide the brokers with information from the agency by this January, so keeping an eye on that.
And Mr. Lee, that's what I'm getting at, when we look at the staffing, as Mr. Leon Guerrero states, create the rules and regulation, proper funding. If you start, if we start getting information, and Senator Sabina Perez goes, "Senator Joe, we need to make sure it's included, we need to start funding them, because radon is a threat to the people of Guam, to our children, to everybody." I won't know that. I mean, I saw this bill, and I said, "I'm going to go check it out," because exactly, Bill 169. 169, okay, they got to do this. This letter is saying, we need help, but, but there's nothing following it, I have nothing behind it, saying, what is the budget required? And I, I'm, I don't want to prolong this bill, I'm just saying, get back to, you know me, Senator, Mr. Lee, just get back, get us the information, get it to Senator Perez. Let's, let's make this bill stronger than it is, and let's fulfill what your requirements are. And we're not going to put Mr. Hagan out of business, but he may have other competitors join, because they're all going to see that radon's going to be a testing, it's going to be a common thing.
If, if the bill gets strengthened, it will create an industry for Mr. Hagan and his competitors, absolutely, yeah. So there, there is a huge potential for not, not just safeguarding, but for, for industry creation and awareness, furthered awareness with, with radon.
Yes, because I like to see EPA being the top of the line, saying, hey, get this done. He'll probably be having fun saying, I got five, six people more to start doing all the testing all over there. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. I guess another question, too, would be, what would it look like? So, and the, one of the points that Walter had set out, that he would like to see a multi-agency coordination with other stakeholder agencies, such as GDOE, Department of Public Health and Social Services, and DBW. So are you looking at permitting, the permitting process, or what part are you looking at there?
Well, prior to myself coming in, I provided information to RPIO. Basically, I personally did not know the extent of the testing that needed to be done. So working with public health, we can identify all of the childcare centers, how many of them are there that we need to test. Working with DOE, you can identify all the schools, how many schools that need to be tested, you know, how many classrooms there are there. And the, and the reason we want standards is because when it comes to, well, we go with NRPP, because we were grant funded by them, but they have national standards for testing of homes, residential buildings, multi-story buildings, large school buildings, and then they, it basically spells out how to do testing and how to do the, how to look at these places and then, and decide how the testing will be done according to how these buildings are constructed. And so the only reason we wanted a national standard is because we want a level playing field, because if somebody's not certified, certified by a state and comes in and their certification standard is not the same as NRPP or the National Radon Safety Board, we don't know if the results that they're giving their customers or the people that are being tested are, are accurate. So we want them to be across, or that's the only reason we're trying to put a national standard or a standard, something equivalent to that. And I spoke to the PIO, it's either the NRPP standard, the National Radon Safety Board, or state equivalent standard, so that everybody's in the same level playing field. That's the only reason for the national standard. As for the testing itself, we just need to gain greater information in order to determine if Guam EPA is going to do this, what kind of universe is out there that we're going to actually have to test, so we know what kind of staff that we need to do this and accomplish this within the two years. And then as a reporting mechanism to ensure that the enforcement is done, we don't regulate schools and we don't regulate daycares, public health does. So every time they come in to get their permit every year, checkbox, do you, did you have a test within the last five years for radon? Did you have a test within the last two years for your mitigation system? You know, things like that. And that's the reason why we're asking for collaboration. And as part of the whole thing is, and like I said, I, I apologize for not having that information to give you today in regards to how much it's going to cost to test all these schools and child cares. But if BBMR has a breakdown, we can provide that information.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. I just emailed that to both of you.
Okay, thank you.
Looking forward to seeing your, your response.
Okay.
And we do have a conference call this Wednesday that we want to invite you to for, for radon with USCP. We'll send you.
I've already, she's already, okay. We were supposed to have it before this hearing, but it fell through.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to testify on Bill 168? If not, this concludes this portion of the agenda, and thank you so much for being here today and, and working to provide testimony. So Bill 204-35COR is a bill that is authored by Senator Joe Sinagastin. It's an act to add a new Article IX to Chapter 77, Division Two, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the issuance of tax credits for contributors to the renovation, improvement, and participation of the Guam Basketball Confederation to the FIBA Asia Cup. I would like to offer the floor to my, to the sponsor of this bill to provide a bill introduction. Senator Sinagastin.
How today, Madam Chair, Senator Perez, Sisus Massey, for hearing this bill and for allowing me to provide a short synopsis on this bill. The intent of Bill 204 is to support the Guam's men's national basketball team and the Guam Basketball Federation on their quest to participate in the International Basketball Federation Asia Cup by authorizing tax credits of up to $400,000 over a two-year period. This small investment will achieve great, greater returns for Guam in sports tourism and international sports infrastructure, while allowing our, our homegrown team to tip off with other teams in Asia. The Guam National Men's Basketball Team has been competing in basketball games in Micronesian and the Pacific. They are the 2015 and 2019 gold medal winners in the Pacific Games and named the most outstanding team by the Pacific Games Council both years. They have, they have recorded 24 straight wins in FIBA competition from 2015 to 2019, including the Pacific Games, Micronesian Games, and FIBA's Asia Cup pre-qualifiers. The Guam's men's national team also ranked 76th in FIBA's world ranking and 14th in Asia, the highest ranking in the island's history. The Guam's men's national team has attained another opportunity to compete in FIBA Asia Cup qualifiers slated to take place during three windows of competition in February 2020, November 2020, February 2021. Guam has the opportunity to host three home games against Hong Kong, New Zealand, and Australia. These games will expose Guam's beauty and her people to international media, whereby millions of international viewers and visitors will learn about Guam. In order to accomplish this and represent Guam effectively, Guam must be prepared to host the games with an approved FIBA facility, including required equipment, furnishing, supplies, and other logistical supports to ensure the success of the games and support our team to compete at the highest level of international basketball competition. FIBA officials have determined that the University of Guam Calvo Fieldhouse is the only facility with an approved capacity on island. I look forward to hearing the testimonies today during today's hearing, and thank you, Madam Chair, for conducting this hearing. I also hope for an expedient release of a community report, as the ordering of equipment, shipping time, and installation of equipment needs to be completed before February 2020. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator Sinagastin. I would like to call upon those that have come to testify on behalf of this bill. Edward J. Calvo, Irvin Jose, Matthew Fergiger, James Dake, Jin Han, Julio Tucson, I believe, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. I'm sorry, there's only one testifying. We did receive other written testimony, so that would be put into the record. All right, okay, so if you want to press the button when it turns red, you can speak into the mic, and if you can just say your name for the record before testimony, thank you.
How today, my name is Edward J. Calvo, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. Start by thanking Senator Sinagastin for that wonderful introduction and summary to the bill. I feel like, I'm afraid I'm going to repeat a lot of what he already mentioned, but I'll go ahead and, and proceed. My name is, known as E.J. Calvo, President of the Guam Basketball Confederation and Head Coach for the Men's, Guam Men's National Basketball Team. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Guam Basketball Confederation, our many coaches, trainers, senior national players, junior national players, basketball academy players, their parents, our fans, and the island in general, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of our national program, and for this opportunity to discuss Bill 204 this afternoon, a bill that will elevate Guam's sports to new heights and inspire generations to come. The Guam Basketball Confederation is the national governing body for the sport of basketball in the territory of Guam, recognized and sanctioned by the Guam Olympic, Guam National Olympic Committee and the International Basketball Federation, known as FIBA. GBC's mission is to inspire Guam and to work closely with the entire community to grow the sport of basketball and create endless opportunities for players, coaches, and officials. GBC has partnered with Department of Parks and Recreation to rehabilitate and operate the former Naval Air Station Tejon Fitness Center. GBC has successfully restored the gymnasium and has made it its permanent training center to develop young players in Guam as well as our national teams. Funding for this facility was primarily provided through a tax credit program similar to what is being proposed by Bill 204. GBC has demonstrated effective processing and financial responsibility in working with the Guam Economic Development Authority to comply with all requirements of that existing tax program. I'd like to thank Senators Pito Terlahi, along with Senators Tina Munya Barnes, Will Castro, and Luisa Munya, for visiting the facility a couple weeks ago for a tour and present a resolution to our GBC board and national players in front of the hundreds of kids that were utilizing the facility on that day. We were humbled and honored by the resolution bestowed upon us, and thank the entire legislature for recognizing our hard work. Our Guam Men's National Team is proudly one of the most successful sports teams in our island's history, with a tradition of winning that spans generations. Specifically, our Men's National Team is undefeated all time in the Micronesian Games, successfully winning gold medals in every Micronesian Games ever played. That success continued at the Pacific Games, with our Men's National Team winning gold medals in 2015 in Papua New Guinea and 2019 in Samoa. The Guam Men's National Team also was awarded the Most Outstanding Team Award by the Pacific Games Council in both 2015 and 2019. In addition, the Guam Men also won three-on-three gold medal in Samoa for the first time ever of that competition. In addition, Team Guam effectively represented Guam at the 2018 FIBA Asia Cup pre-qualifiers in Bangkok, Thailand, with a winning record of 6-0, advancing to the 2021 FIBA Asia Cup qualifiers. The road to the FIBA Cup and Olympics. By the end of 2018, Team Guam's FIBA ranking has actually been elevated to 73 in the world, its highest in history, again. GBC has elevated Guam's national program and is preparing to host the FIBA Asia Cup qualification games in Guam in 2020 and 2021 at the University of Guam Calvo Fieldhouse, creating economic development opportunities through sports tourism, as well as inspiring and uniting the community. Our Guam Men's Team will face New Zealand, Australia, and Hong Kong in our first window of games, teams with millions of fans and followers. International exposure and positive media coverage will be outstanding, with potential for even more exposure for Guam as we work to advance to future competitions against nations like Japan, Korea, China, and the Philippines. The potential value of this exposure could be in the millions of dollars, but we must invest in preparing our national team if we expect to compete with these nations with much larger populations and budgets. Lastly, Bill 204 provides the required funding for enhancements to be made to the University of Guam Calvo Fieldhouse, and prepare the facility to host FIBA Level One games. These improvements will be realized and enjoyed by student athletes of UOG, other members of our, of our community that use the facility, and potentially many more athletes and fans that participate in forthcoming international tourism events. In 1979, Guam hosted the Pacific Games, and again in 1999. I had a conversation with basketball legend Tony Suzrico once about, about these games, and he spoke about how he felt the exposure to international sports affected our community, especially young athletes seeing their national team against other, other countries. And I believe these upcoming events, that this bill is aimed to support, will support, will inspire thousands in our community once again in a positive way, and unite our island as we host these major nations in competition. Tourism continues to be an engine for our economy as well, and the exposure generated by our participation and hosting of these events will lead to years of growth potential and diversification. I thank you for this opportunity to speak about the bill, and I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of Guam Basketball. Thank you for your time. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Calvo. Yeah, in looking at international sports, I mean, you were looking at the, the high caliber athletes. It's amazing that, you know, they have funding that goes towards just, they could just train, that, that's their job is to train, and that's how they, they can achieve such, such excellence. And I think it is important to, to invest in our, in our community, especially, you know, the young people, because that's the ones that can really, you know, gain a lot from that. You know, and also thinking about, yeah, sports tourism. I think, you know, when we talk about our economy, it's important to diversify our economy, and, you know, sports tourism is often seen as one, one avenue to do that. So the more exposure that Guam gets in, in a different, you know, in, in this way, the greater potential we have as far as revenue generating for our island. So yes, I do support those, those ideas, and, and just, I just have a couple questions about the bill itself, and so regarding the, just the details of the bill, and maybe the author may be able to speak to it. So, so regarding the tax credits, would those tax credits be transferable, and is there an expiration date to them?
No, I don't believe they're, they're transferable or there is no expiration date. The, the urgency really, first and foremost, is the enhancements to the facility that will host the competitions. Obviously, it takes time to procure the equipment and, and get it to Guam, specifically new, modernized goals, the main goals that are used on the, at the UOG Fieldhouse, I believe have been there for 20-plus years. So this will be the first time they get that investment, which will be, which will remain at the University Fieldhouse for, for continued use. Lighting improvements, take some time, some cosmetic enhancements, and some work on the flooring, the main playing surface. So that, that's the urgency that we're, we're hoping to receive support for. And then after that, in 2020, like you, like you mentioned, the, these, this support will really help in terms of our players and staff being able to focus on the games and not fundraising efforts in order to even travel to these competitions. We will, although we're also hosting three games here, we have to travel to their countries. Hong Kong is not too far, but of course, Australia and New Zealand, those away games will be a much higher cost. So to be able to focus on the task at hand and have this support for our program, that's really the main benefit to this bill.
So regarding the improvements to the facility, will the Guam Basketball Confederation, will they be donating that equipment to the Fieldhouse?
Yes. We've been meeting with the University of Guam team and all different physicians at the university to get on the same page and prepare for, for, for this plan, and we, we intend on entering into a simple MOU between our nonprofit and the university, so that they can accept these donations, and also allow us to, to have, to procure the, the contractors that will do any work. For instance, I think the main, the main contractor will be an electrical light improvement. The lumens that are required are much higher than what they currently have shining on that floor, and so... And so to be able to work with them to make sure the proper work is done, because of course, that will be a permanent installation. The other equipment will be a lot, much more simple to just donate. No real work being done, just keep it.
Yeah, I guess maybe this is a conversation I should have with the author, but I believe we still need to reach out to GIDEA to get their input regarding the bill. So, yeah, we'll definitely bring up some of the questions to them and to the author. All right, thank you. So I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino.
Ms. Madam Chair, I have a meeting in a few minutes, so she kindly is allowing me to go next. So I am glad to hear that you outlined your relationship that you're working on with the University of Guam. That was going to be one of my questions. And to understand where the costs are going, so you mentioned that there are three competitions that you would be part of and that there are three games that we would be hosting. What is the, or do you have a breakdown between the two? Like, how much would go towards the competitions, if any, and then how much is going to be going towards the facility improvement?
We have a few proposals that are still pending on the facility improvements, namely the equipment, but it's going to be in excess of $200,000 of improvements going towards the university. And I can provide or email a breakdown for you if you'd like, and it can show the itemized equipment that is being targeted. But of course, we've been through this before with the other tax credit we've worked with and are going through the process of securing all options so we can really make sure we're spending the money wisely.
It's good to hear of your experience with the other tax credit, that again, that helps reassure us. As the chairwoman mentioned, it will be good for us to hear from GIDEA and so forth. So with 200K going towards, or 1,000 going towards the facility, is the breakdown then, generally speaking, because all things shift over time? So would the other 200,000 be going towards the competitions?
Yes. And not all away games, even the games that we will be hosting here will require some expense in terms of housing officials and in general operations. Granted, we're also working hard on seeking corporate sponsorship support because it will be hopefully a well-attended event at the university, and that will hopefully take down the risk to our organization and help to pay for some of those operating expenses. What we hope to take care of is at least hotel and travel expenses primarily, which again puts money back into our local businesses when we're hosting games here and fills hotel rooms.
Right. I think the term used earlier about sports tourism helps outline what you are detailing. And all types of tourism, be it conferences, be it trainings, be it sports tourism, they're all very helpful to our economy. So I definitely appreciate that. And then I'm wanting some guidance from you. I know that the Fieldhouse is used for a variety of types of functions, so I would imagine, but perhaps you can outline for me, in the MOU, are you seeking to see some sort of guarantee so that the equipment and facility improvement are safeguarded for your later use?
Yes. I don't believe that's a major concern. The sport of basketball is used quite often. In fact, we have a game tonight at 8:00 if you'd like to watch the national team play against some local teams. I think we play the university tonight, and it will be on television. I'm not sure if it's live, but on PBS. But for instance, that league is taking place hosted by the University of Guam. I think it's called the UOG League, and it's the highest caliber league currently on island, so it gives us a good chance to practice. They, we're very aware of their equipment, how old it is, refurbishing or replacing the existing goals, the portable goals, as well as improving the lighting and anything else we could do there. Very confident it will be there for continued use. And I do understand the MOU will have an agreement in terms of making sure that our reservation dates for the games we're hosting are plugged in their calendar, and they're working as partners with us because they are also benefiting from this activity and from these potential funds.
Right. And I'm sure they have policies in place already for taking care of the equipment that they have.
Yes.
And so that you will be working to make sure that your investments will be protected in that same way or to the standard that is needed.
Definitely.
Do you have any estimate as to how long these improvements will last? How long they will continue to serve our community? Do they generally last quite a while, two years, five years, 10 years?
When I was in high school, I was playing on the same equipment that's up there today. So I think that says something about, their staff was the same staff, maybe plus or minus a couple guys, Joey Santos and Tony Thompson were there before, but it's pretty much the same team. So they know how to maintain the Fieldhouse, and it's the same equipment. I believe they might have done a few refinishings to the floor over the years, but it's the same wood. So this investment, although I know they did improve the facility not too long ago with a big sponsorship, was mainly for the bleachers. They replaced the bleachers. Improving now the lighting and some of the other equipment, I think will really take the facility to the next level, and it'll be something that hopefully prepares Guam to host more events at that facility. Crossing our fingers, we see more large, high-scale events in the future.
So your testimony helps us understand, and I think it's very important for us to understand, the longer the investment is going to be serving the community, the better from our perspective.
20-plus years.
That the money is being well-spent and it has a long-term return. So that's very reassuring, I think, to hear. Perhaps, perhaps it's hard to predict, but maybe you have some sort of assessment. So the fact that equipment can last 20 years doesn't always mean that that's the best plan if we're continuing to host international competitions. So do you know technologically, do the type of equipment, does it change very often? Or keeping up with the international standard, even if our maintenance is good, will the technology and the other aspects be serving us for a long time?
Not very often. Understood. Not very often, but it has changed, and that's why these requirements are not just a luxury, it's a requirement to be able to host these games. The equipment that is currently there and actually some of the lines on the floor that need to be revised or upgraded are required. We would not be able to host this level of competition without making these improvements, and our organization would not be able to do it on our own. So the upgrade, although it doesn't happen often, it is, this upgrade takes us to the highest level of international standard, and it should last for a long time.
I think that does help reassure us. We might be able to maintain it for 20 years, but there might be, because of these international standards, there might be a need to upgrade more quickly than that. But it sounds like, still all in all, it's going to be a long-term investment, and so that's important to hear.
We believe so, yes.
Thank you, Senator Kelly Marsh Titino. Senator Titigui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, and good afternoon to the Guam Basketball Confederation. And I can't tell you how proud I am of you guys and the legacy that you're continuing on from the time of Tony Suzrico, Champ Cavill, and some of the other basketball players that took gold for the first time. I remember them very well, and you guys are definitely continuing the legacy. Everyone is very, very proud of you. There's no doubt about it in all the work you're doing. Bringing up the next generation in basketball is, I'm glad that you're looking at that at the forefront and pushing through with that generation. You're doing the same thing, right, Sevi? Just for the record, I grew up with Sevi, or I shouldn't say that, it sounds like we're the same age, but, you know, I watched this boy grow up and watched him grow up with my kids. In fact, my son, Sevi used to be taller, right, than Logan was. They're about the same age, but now my son is six foot eight. So he kind of passed you up, Sevi, on that one. But you're definitely a better basketball player than he is, that's for sure. And so, I mean, everybody on this island is very proud of what you've done to put Guam on the map. Very, very proud. And to the extent where they were so proud that in October 14th of 2014, the Guam Legislature, Senator Brad McCready put out a law, and I'm glad you mentioned that too, with regards to tax credit. In fact, so proud that they gave $2.5 million in tax credit to the Guam Federation or the Guam Basketball Confederation to renovate and build Tejon Gym. I mean, that's $2.5 million in 2014 that was given. And, you know, that says a lot about what the government wants to do to support you. And I'm glad to see that, you know, some of the basketball players are here today, but, you know, like yesterday, we were up against, you know, another bill that was requesting for $400,000 for FestPAC, and we only had like two people there to come out. But, you know, there's, you know, I've been playing sports all my life. I'm a certified tennis player, and I had a scholarship for volleyball. So athletics is definitely in my blood, and I understand the importance of it. But there's all the other issues that we have to deal with on our island. And that's a hospital that's falling apart, as well as, you know, our roads, our public school system that needs a lot of help. So, you know, I do support sports. In fact, when I was at GBB, there was, this is a question I'd like to ask you too, if I was hoping that you've made the initiative to go to GBB for some funding on the ambassadorship program whenever you're going on any type of trips to play off-island. Have you looked into that?
We have, and we were very thankful to receive support that helped us get to Samoa and back to win the gold a few months ago. And they gave us the, I think the maximum they could as a group was 5,000, and it did help, but Samoa's very far away, and it helped. And it's once a year, so maybe in the future we can return to GBB and seek more support.
Well, I'm definitely sure that you should because next year, February is a new year, and when you're going after that next game in February, that might be an option to go after as well. You know, you guys are very popular, very, very popular. I don't see an issue why going out and getting sponsorships for what you're doing on these trips. I'm sure there's a lot of people who would love to sponsor this team that we're so proud of. Have you, I noticed you didn't come here to provide us anything like a budget to explain the full amount of the $400,000 that's been requested in this legislation, to tell us exactly how much is being spent, how much per player is receiving to go on these, to these basketball games in February of 2020, November 2020, and February of 2021. So did you bring a budget to show us exactly?
Not to hand to you today, but I can certainly send you our estimates. Obviously, the largest cost traveling from Guam is always airfare for us, and when it comes to timing, we can certainly provide estimates. But the normal national program travels with anywhere from 25 to 30 packs. We are developing our group, our training staff, our coaching staff, and then of course, our players and alternate players to be a group of about 20. So with a group of about 20 members of our program going to represent Guam, travel cost alone could already cost $40,000, $50,000 per trip.
And how much of that is shouldered by any of your players, or is it fully funded?
In the past, our players have had to wash cars, sell lunch plates, and if they don't have the time to, pay out of their own jobs, as well as coaches. Everyone is volunteer. Our federation pays no salaries to our board, to our players, to anybody. So everything goes back to the, help the teams travel and pay those costs. Sponsors help as much as they can. So the Pacific Games, a lot came out of pocket. Micronesian Games, a lot comes out of pocket. For these FIBA Asia Games, this is the highest level we've ever played, and this is where we really like to step up and focus on preparation for the games and less fundraising.
Well, I tell you, it's definitely an act of love, what the boys are doing and going out there. I mean, being able to play is just, you know, it's sometimes the height of their life, you know, just to be able to get on that court and play. And so I have a question with regards to this hosting on Guam that you have. You mentioned that the plan was to host. When is this?
February 23rd, we will host New Zealand, who is now ranked number 24 in the world.
2020?
Yes, 2020.
Okay. And when did you know you were going to host them for this February 23rd, where you're going to host New Zealand to come to Guam?
Yes.
Okay. When did you know this?
The draw was about July, maybe June or July of this year, when we were picked and the games were organized.
So it's not up to the Guam Basketball Confederation to decide to host?
We were given this opportunity by qualifying, first and foremost, and then after we qualified, our name was put into a random draw, like they do with also FIFA and other sports. And we were drawn into this pool, and the schedule was set and provided to us. And we actually are held to certain deadlines where we have to commit and say, we are able to host, we are willing to host. Otherwise, I'm assuming they would find a neutral site.
So by doing this already, then what kind of assurance did you have that you would have the funding to be able to host this?
There's no assurance. It was confidence that we can make it happen and that we had enough support to be able to host games.
And what if, EJ, the government is not able to shoulder any of this cost? Will this games, this hosting in February 23rd, 2020 still go on?
It may not, and we will lose an opportunity to, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity almost. So that's where, I got to say, there was some confidence that we would get the support, whether from the government or from the private sector, and we're working at all angles to make this happen.
Of this $2.5 million in tax credit that was given to the Guam Basketball Confederation for the Tejon Gym.
Yes.
Has all of it been expended already? Because there was a limit to allow only $250,000 every year for 10 years.
Yeah. I appreciate you mentioning that, and I'd like to once again invite everyone up to the facility to take a look. Those funds are 100% directed towards rehabilitation of a broken-down facility. It has been six years, I believe, so 1.5 has been expended.
No, it's $2.5 million always given.
No, 1.5, 250 a year times six years.
Yeah, and it has been, every year you have been able to give out a tax credit of $250,000 every year?
Times six years, yes.
Times six years so far? So there is some money left over?
So the facility is not done. It's still under construction. We were able to prioritize and fix the main court, which is where we've been holding youth academies and youth leagues and training our national team. The front, the restrooms and the main lobby is completed. Our locker rooms are not, our weight room is not, and we still would like to put a security fence and complete the project. However, it is $250,000 a year. So in January, we will be back at work with a new year of funding to continue the work on that facility.
So $2.5 million, that's a lot of money, you know, for, you know, a facility that, couldn't you get it up to par to be able to host this event coming up?
The facility is not big enough. It was built as a elementary school gym for the Navy Elementary School initially. Even putting a full-size FIBA court, it's pretty tight. Even putting a full-size FIBA court, it's pretty tight. There are no bleachers. That would be a future phase. The first year or two of the project were dedicated to environmental cleanup, asbestos, lead poisoning. We had to clean the entire facility, as you need to do in Tejon. After that, we had to make sure that we were connected to power. All the wooden poles were torn down over the years. We had to add new concrete poles to get power hooked up. And then sewer is a big problem in Tejon, where we're actually still on septic and hoping to earmark future years of funding to be able to trench and be able to hook up the sewer. And then of course, as we move on and develop the rest of the gym, the power bill is going to end up being higher and higher the more usage we get. So we're hoping to put in higher efficiency lighting and be more sustainable with that facility. So.
How many more events do you plan on hosting, other than the February 23rd one? Do you plan on?
There's three games.
Three games total, right?
Yes, three games total for this.
So do you think that, because there's about a million dollars left over in tax credit that is given to Tejon Gym, and what you're doing is wanting to, well, you're wanting some tax credits again, this time to upgrade the University of Guam, correct? And you're looking at about 200,000, right? That's what you were saying earlier?
Towards the University of Guam.
Towards the University of Guam. So what if some of that tax credit was diverted from Tejon Gym for this year? Because you're given 250 every year. To divert that to the University of Guam, considering that you're going to be doing two other events there, are you amenable to something like that?
I'm amenable to any support. It would just be less to complete the project that we started in Tejon. And I have to say that the 2.5 estimate was way before we really got in there with engineers and found the problems that that building has. And maybe that's why the government let it go for 10 years. And so in fixing that building, we'll only, we'll get less done. But of course, you know, we're hoping for this to be a long-term goal, to finish that building over the next couple of years. And what's in front of us right now is to be able to host these games.
Yeah. You know, I agree with you. Sometimes when you have something that's already broken down and trying to do a Band-Aid effect, it's actually costing more than just bringing in or just building a brand-new one, you know, kind of like the hospital. I want to read something to you from BBMR that they wrote into the record, Madam Chair. It talks about, this is a fiscal note regarding the credits. And it says, "However, the Bureau notes it is concerned that the use of tax credits will impact the government's ability to manage the finances of the government in Guam as it will reduce expected revenues due to the government. The filing of tax credits by the taxpayer will take priority over appropriations made in the annual budget process, which may impact government programs." So that's why I was thinking, how can we do a win-win situation here? And that is maybe divert something from the Tejon Gym, which you have. And you're planning to use the University of Guam again for some other reason. And I'm pretty sure the University of Guam will be very appreciative of that infusion of repair to allow the Guam Federation basketball team to play there free of cost, if you need be, or raise any money that way. So that's just an idea, and I hope the sponsor of the bill may consider that option as well. The other question I have is, we've already talked about going out there and fundraising. You know, for the Tejon Gym, it's a whole lot easier to find federal grants, you know, for something like that when you're dealing with the youth and the children and athletics in the community. It's a great opportunity to find funding and federal grants. Unlike what you're trying to do at the University of Guam to host a basketball tournament, it's kind of harder on the federal side. So if you were to divert money, that would be one other way to do that. So what companies do you know of, Mr. Calvall, out there that are willing to donate to the Guam Basketball Confederation to receive these tax credits?
We know of many that are interested. Like you said, you'd reach out to Gita and review the existing program that we value. KFC, I think it's called Guam Fast Foods. My vice president of Guam Basketball, Frank Cruz, is our manager there and wasn't able to make it today, but always happy to sell more fried chicken and help support Guam Triple J Enterprises, the Jones family has also helped in the past. I believe Pele's Supermarkets has helped in the past. There may be a few others. I know there were about five or six, because like I said, 250,000 per year divvied up over quarterly payments to contractors for materials and labor. Three or four companies have no problem.
So we're not lacking anybody out there to contribute?
No. It is actually at a cost to them, because they really don't receive any credit, and it costs them filing fees and things like that. But they're happy to be supportive.
Okay. Okay. Well, I greatly appreciate you being here, answering my questions, and also hearing my concerns as well. So I appreciate the time and the gentlemen who are here today and the ladies who are here today as well. Thank you so much. Sevi?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titto. Senator Justin Augustine to close out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm looking forward to, and I'm in support totally of the basketball team. And I know the University of Guam is looking forward to the upgrade of the facility that they don't have any funds for. And I know that the domino effect is that, number one, when everybody knows there's a national competition going on in Guam, everybody's going to zoom in, people from New Zealand's going to start flying in, people from Hong Kong and everywhere are going to start tuning in and start saying, and the Goomenians in the States are going to say, none of that's Guam. Yes, that's our Guam boys competing internationally. And that's something that I look forward to. I'm proud of our team. And you know what? I will support the team, and let's find a way. Because when the tourism comes, the taxes get collected, the tourism drives through, the 200,000, the 400,000 doesn't become an issue. And we just work it out, work it, and we just hope for the best. Because I know that when UOG gets a benefit and the gym is nicer, and when all the schools go to UOG and they want to graduate, they're going to be like, wow, nice lights. Everything is going to be upgraded, and it's all going to happen in the few months. It's not going to take a year. Why? Because you've got a game coming up in February 2020. So everything is within days. And that's what I'm looking forward to. And I'm hoping that the committee will submit a favorable report, and that we can put it on the floor, and I ask my colleagues to support this bill so we can help the Guam National Basketball Team move forward. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Augustine. Yes?
Can I just make one more final statement, just to express what our overall mission is? Hearing some of the feedback and questions. I talked about our mission, and we talk about the word inspire from time to time, and Senator Augustine kind of hit on that as well. To us, it's, we appreciate the support for our men's team. It's bigger than our men's team to us. We see our mission is inspiring more kids to bounce a basketball, shoot a basketball, rather than join a gang, rather than steal, fight, do other things. This is more about our community. We also see this as an economic engine for all those reasons. We love the competition, but we also would like to see more people know about Guam and maybe visit Guam or encourage others to pay attention. And so to us, it's use of this sport for a greater good, and that's what we're really exciting about. That's why, back to the point that we all volunteer. This takes us away from our family, from our friends, from our free time, and this is why we do it. And that's really our hopes. In terms of training players, we have more boys and girls playing college basketball today than ever in Guam's history. And that doesn't get nearly enough highlight, boys and girls. I believe one of our young ladies at Shama Lan University is going to end up being their all-time leading scorer in the school's history and playing for Team Guam, raised in our program. And those kind of things, it's not just about the men's program. It's what this does and what we can do to lead the way and hopefully inspire our other teams, our other members of the community. So appreciate the questions, and I just wanted to kind of share that's where we were coming from. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and providing your testimony and answering questions. So this will conclude this meeting. We will continue to receive testimony until 4:00 PM, November 12th, Tuesday. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairwoman of the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation and Procurement. It can be dropped off at the Guam Congress Building here, or it could be emailed to office@senatorparas.org. We now adjourn this meeting. The time is now 3:50 PM. Thank you.